Good morning. The time is now 9:31 and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education meeting of June 9th, 2020 is called to order. Due to the COVID-19 national emergency and in accordance with Executive Director 2020-2 and Executive Order 2020-75, the State Board of Education Regular and Committee of the whole meeting is being convened with remote access technology. The first item on the agenda is the approval of Agenda and Order of Priority. Are there any items board members would like to add or delete from the agenda?
Dr. Rice?
Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. I would like to move to add the resolution to eradicate racism and create more equitable and inclusive schools for Black children slash all children to be placed after Item 3A on this morning's agenda.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Dr. Pugh, I think you're on mute, but I can hear you. I can sort of feel your second. Second by Dr. Pugh, motion by Dr. Pritchett, second by Dr. Pugh. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Marilyn, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Fecto?
You're on mute, Michelle.
Fecto?
Here.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Ramos Montini is absent. Snyder is absent. Tilly?
She said yes in the comment. I don't know.
Thanks for your help, Pam. And Albridge?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion approved to amend the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved?
Moved by President Albridge. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please. Marilyn?
Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan? McMillan?
Yes.
Thank you. Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Ramos Montini absent. Snyder absent. Tilly?
She says yes.
And Albridge?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. At this time, Marilyn Schneider, our State Board Executive, whom you've just been hearing, will introduce the members of the State Board of Education. Marilyn, you do the honors.
Thank you. Dr. Cassandra Albridge is the President from Dearborn. Dr. Pamela Pugh, Vice President from Saginaw. Ms. Michelle Fecto, Secretary from Detroit. Mr. Tom McMillan, Treasurer from Oakland Township. Ms. Tiffany Tilly, NASB delegate, that's the Board's Association, from Southfield. Dr. Judy Pritchett, Co-Chair of the State Board of Education Legislative Committee from Washington Township. Ms. Lupe Ramos Montini, Chair of the Board's Legislative Committee, is from Grand Rapids. She is unable to join us today. Ms. Nikki Snyder is the Board's Legislative Committee Member from Dexter. She is unable to join us today. Ms. Brandy Johnson, the Governor's Policy Advisor for Education and Workforce, is unable to join us today. And Ms. Carol Lahey, Michigan Teacher of the Year, who teaches English Language Arts and History at Stony Creek High School in Rochester Community Schools, is on her way to joining us as we speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. First item on the agenda is educational updates related to COVID-19, and I'd like to be able to address this and then cast a little bit wider net about the meeting as a whole today. Board members, as you're aware, in April and in May, we heard pretty extensive updates on COVID-19. You'll hear COVID-19 updates again today for obvious reasons. Three months since the first positive COVID-19 cases in the state of Michigan. Yesterday, we were up to 58,999 cases in the state of Michigan, 5,673 deaths in Michigan. Nationally, we've had just shy of 2 million cases, more than 100,000 deaths. Worldwide, we've had more than 7 million cases, more than 400,000 deaths. It's an extraordinary moment. It's a moment unlike any that any of us have ever lived through, and I'm hoping that it is a moment unlike any of us will ever have to live through again in our lives. So we're going to continue to share with you aspects of our work associated with COVID-19 today. Updates on childcare and feeding in the morning, on state budget and school budget ramifications in the afternoon. In addition, we will continue our work on our strategic plan update, work that we began before the winter break and that we paused for two months during the pandemic in the state. Chief Deputy Superintendent Sheila Alice, Director of Strategic Planning and Implementation, Kelly Siciliano Carter, shared with you at our work session last month and look forward to sharing with you again this month regarding strategic education planning. Today, we will be talking about draft guiding principles, goals, and metrics. This afternoon, Dr. William Pearson, Ms. Gloria Chapman, Director and Assistant Director of the Office of Partnership Districts, respectively, will share with you an update on partnership districts, work that the Board and that the Department have been doing over the last few years. I'd like to share, if I could, please, initial reflections on three issues. The first is funding. First, consistent with your resolution, Board, at the last State Board meeting, our pre-K-12 education associations, all of the major K-12 or pre-K-12 education organizations in the state have formed a coalition, "Our Children, Our Future," to lobby Congress to preserve educational services for kids. School aid fund, as you know, has $2.39 billion less now than was anticipated in January for this school year and next school year combined. This could lead to the worst cut in post-Proposal A history unless there is more federal aid for schools. Six studies in six years have said the same thing, Board. We underfund public education. It's not just my opinion. It's the conclusion of six studies. Different kids have different needs. Different needs have different costs. The studies are unequivocal. We don't spend enough money now on our children, let alone if big cuts are necessary. No child asked to be born or to grow up in part during a pandemic, and no child's education should be adversely affected because he or she did, in fact, grow up during a pandemic. It's incumbent on Congress to make sure that our children are protected, not forgotten at this juncture. Preserve educational services for children. Board, this needs to include not simply operating dollars, but dollars to address the digital divide as well. As you know, approximately 30% of our young people, according to surveys, pre-pandemic, didn't have the requisite devices at home for learning at a distance or online learning. 30% didn't have the requisite connectivity to the Internet. While our local schools and local school districts have done a nice job with devices and have tried to address temporary connectivity through hotspots, the fact is, is that connectivity is a much more difficult, more complicated, more expensive issue. And to the extent that we are going to address the digital divide, and we need to address the digital divide, it's going to be, again, incumbent upon Congress to address this issue. The reality is, is that the homeschool divide is not as sharp as it once was. Home is now where we do school, at least for the time being. And what was previously considered home technology is now an extension of school, and I would argue is necessary in order to make school fully fruitful and fully useful for our young people. We call on Congress to address the digital divide and, by extension, help us to address the exposure gap, the summer slide, and finally, an achievement gap between working class and poor children on the one hand, middle-class children on the other. To close the digital divide helps us help children, whether we're in a pandemic or whether we are post-pandemic. So this is a strong encouragement, a strong exhortation for Congress. And Kyle Durant, our Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Board, will be talking about finances a little bit more this afternoon. Two more issues and my introductory filibuster will end. Return to school. We are going to share a few slides at the moment, just to refresh the Board's memory and update the Board on where we are with respect to return to school. Let's put those slides up on the... Thank you very much, Marty. So, as you know, Board, there are a number of aspects of return to learn, and we're not going to go over them all today, but I would like to share a few of the vehicles that are working on return to learn. You go to the next slide, and what you see is three broad groups that are working in this space. The Governor's COVID-19 Task Force on Education, Governor's Return to Learn, Advisory Council, and MDE Work Groups. On March 3rd, Governor established the COVID-19 Task Force on Education. This is all internal to state government, individuals, people from the Michigan Department of Education, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and others within state government, including the Executive Office of the Governor. First two COVID-19 cases were identified a week later. Two days later, the Governor closed schools initially for three weeks, subsequently for another week, and then finally, for the remainder of the school year. COVID-19 Task Force is now charged with recommending a roadmap for when and under what conditions schools will reopen, with the need to reflect upon various public health scenarios. This is first and foremost, Board, a public health issue, and as I've told you in the past, that's hard for a public education guy to say, but it's, in fact, accurate. Task Force met last week, includes four representatives from MDE, including me. May 15th, the Governor created the Return to Learn Advisory Council in an executive order. This Advisory Council, which was named a week ago, includes two dozen individuals representing a wide swath of people outside of state government. And Tanya Allen, President and CEO of the Skilman Foundation, will serve as the Chair of the Return to Learn Advisory Council. The Advisory Council's meeting, it met last week, will provide the Task Force with ideas on how to safely, equitably, efficiently return to school, has assembled a wide range of voices. So the Advisory Council shares ideas with the Task Force, the Task Force recommendations to the Governor. In addition, we have established MDE Work Groups, and they've been meeting over the last several weeks to help gather input regarding the variety of educational needs across Michigan school settings, urban, rural, and suburban. Each of the three work groups includes 30 to 35 educational stakeholders. Each of the three work groups includes a co-chair from inside the department and a co-chair from public education within the state. These work groups, you go to the next slide, these work groups are providing ideas to me and to the Task Force and, more broadly, to MDE on how schools should prepare and implement student instruction for next year. This is very, very complicated, unprecedented. It's become almost jargon to say, but it's absolutely true. This is an unprecedented moment in our history, and so to have a wide range of people involved in reflecting upon how we do what we do is important. These work groups are also going to help us with reflection on the many micro and granular decisions to run the day-to-day school year. You may recall, Board, that I've done three rounds of meetings with superintendents in regions, so 50 to 60 superintendents at a pop. And those meetings are helpful. One, for me to inform superintendents of where we are in particular issues, but also for superintendents to share with me their ideas, their reflections, their questions, and the like. These work groups are, in many ways, an extension of those regional meetings, an opportunity to get good and positive and helpful, useful feedback from the field in fleshing out our roadmap for the coming year. It would be our hope, and you go to the next slide. It would be our hope and expectation that our roadmap is able to be shared on or before June 30th. That would be the hope and expectation, that that becomes public for us on or before June 30th. The third issue is George Floyd. And Board, I would be remiss if I did not share a few reflections about George Floyd's killing. George Floyd's death is a tragedy. It's the latest in a long series of killings of Blacks and particularly Black men in this country. It is an outrage and should be cause for pause, reflection, anger, and action in our country. No one person is responsible in our society for the racism that led to the killing of George Floyd and of many others before him. That said, we are all responsible for reflecting upon how we might build a better world from this point forward. Schools are one critical part of a much larger world, but those of us who believe in schools, and especially in public schools, believe that they can change lives and do every day. We, as educators, must continue to rethink what we do in our schools to consider how we can root out racism. We need to go beyond tolerance and acceptance to inclusion. Later this morning, the Board will be considering a resolution on the eradication of racism and the creation of more equitable and more inclusive schools. I'll have more to share then. Our first presentation this morning, as it were, is on childcare. This presentation will be led by Dr. Scott Kennick Schneck, Deputy Superintendent of P-20 System and Student Transitions, and Ms. Lisa Brewer-Wallraven, Director of Child Development and Care. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Dr. Kay and Lisa, welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Dr. Rice. And thank you, State Board of Education members, for allowing us to provide some updates to you around childcare. So we were with you and presented in April and also in May around two grant programs that were developed to help the childcare field. And so today's presentation, we would like to update you once again. And the update will be twofold. One, to let you know and inform you about some numbers with regard to the April month grant period, and then also to talk about the May grant month period as well. And so with that, I will introduce Ms. Lisa Brewer-Wallraven.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks again for having us for this update. As you know, the landscape for childcare has certainly been changing, as many other things during this pandemic. In March, we had approximately 11,400 providers across the state. Now, depending on where you live in the state, there are approximately 30 to 35% of those providers who remain open to support children and families. On Monday, all childcare was allowed to reopen across the state, and we continue to hope and expect that those numbers of open providers will expand, and more families will be returning to the workforce, and children will have high-quality settings to attend. We're still focused on the two goals you see here on the slides. Again, making sure families have access to high-quality care and ensuring that there are providers who are open and accessible to those families and children. We'll be continuing to work with stakeholders and partners to support providers as they reopen and have those choices available for families. In previous months, we've provided some examples of the work across these five broad areas. We continue to collaborate, talk with stakeholders, and learn from other states to ensure that we're meeting the needs of children, families, and providers across the state. We've talked about also, in previous months, the supports that have been put together for providers. Our current efforts have been focused on reopening, which is a document that Childcare Licensing and LARA put together to support providers as they're getting ready to reopen their programs. In addition to those collaborative efforts, we wanted to provide a brief update on the federally funded grants being offered to both open and closed providers, as we're helping to rebuild childcare in Michigan and ensure those opportunities and access are available to children and families. We're continuing to work with partners to make sure all of these eligible providers know about the grant opportunity and are able to submit an application. We have officially closed the April application. We did that last Friday, and yesterday, we conducted two webinars for childcare providers as we're getting ready to kick off or open up the May application, which happened this morning. We'll have another webinar this afternoon to also provide information to providers who weren't able to participate yesterday. Minimal changes have been made to the May application. One change is related to how providers are reimbursed for children who are in care. In April, they were reimbursed if they were caring for essential workers' children, but for the May application, we're reimbursing for all children in care for a minimum of five days. Now that childcare has reopened across the state, there are two assurances that were removed for the May application. These strategies were originally put in place to help families, especially essential workers, when a lot of care was closed due to the pandemic. In working with the State Budget Office and the Governor's Office Liaison, we determined to that we needed to remove these assurances. We got a lot of feedback from the field that they were causing a hardship for providers, and in our efforts to encourage more providers to open and serve children and families, we thought removing these assurances would help with that effort. We also added one new assurance to the May application. This is really based on federal guidance that we received on May 12th from the Office of Childcare, and it's just making sure that providers are aware that there are multiple funding sources that they are eligible for, and when you utilize these federal funding sources, you can't use them for the same purpose. The data that you see on this slide is from the end of the day on Thursday, June 4th. At that time, we had 60% of eligible providers across the state who had submitted an application for April. And with that quick update, thank you for your continued interest and support in helping us rebuild childcare, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Thank you to you both, Board members. Any questions or comments for Dr. Kennick Schneck or Ms. Lisa Brewer-Wallraven? I have a comment from Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. Lisa and Scott, I again want to thank you for this important work, as there has been a little bit more movement in the last week or so. I've had an opportunity to talk to more of my acquaintances and friends, and parents in particular. And while everyone is focused on when will school open, what will it look like, the next most frequent question is, what can I do about childcare? Where can I find affordable and quality childcare because it may be that I can't send my child to school every day for several reasons? So I appreciate your work and continued work on this so that not only our youngest children, but also our school-aged children will have safe places to be able to be cared for while their parents are returning to work.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Dr. Albridge?
So that actually was part of my question. I noticed that Michelle is actually also trying to get in, but she's utilizing the chat function and not the meeting chat, so just please be aware of that. And Michelle, if you want to click on the button that says "Show Conversation," that's where you can put your information in. So to piggyback on Judy's point, do we have a sense of... Well, we probably don't, but as you're going through and you're looking at safely reopening schools for the fall, my impression is that there's going to be a dramatically increased need for childcare funding in the fall. I'm sorry, for childcare in the fall. And so I'm just curious, do we have any type of sense yet of what that increased need will be? And are there plans in place to help address that?
So I will yield to Lisa on both of those questions. I know she's been working very closely with many folks around those issues.
Thanks. We don't have an exact number in terms of what the increased need will be, but it is certainly something that we're talking about and discussing as decisions are being made about what a return to school will look like for K-12. We are going to start having more conversations with stakeholders related to school-aged childcare and childcare needs, so we expect to continue to gather more information and be able to connect those two pieces in the upcoming months.
Thank you very much. Ms. Fecto?
Yeah, I had two questions. One is, do we have an understanding of, I mean, geographically, where these childcare centers will be located? And it's tied to the other questions. Are they in areas where there's a high need for that? And then my second question is, what precautions are being taken for children who may have underlying health conditions?
So I'll start with the first one. So we're working with our partners to identify how many childcare centers are reopening and how many may be open at this time. I believe, and Lisa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the number was somewhere around 35%, but more are reopening, obviously, as time goes by. So in terms of where they're at in preparing for children with health conditions, I'll yield to Lisa.
Sure. Yes, we are gathering information on opened programs. We just started making calls and gathering that information last week, so we should have a better sense in a few weeks where they are located across the state and as people make those decisions to open. But our data is a little bit limited at this time. And in terms of precautions, in the reopening document that we worked on with the Department of Health and Human Services and Childcare Licensing, there are guidelines for providers to consider in terms of safety precautions and measures for all children, but particularly those who... but particularly those who may have underlying conditions. This week, LARA is hosting phone calls for that reopening document where pediatricians and experts from DHHS will be participating in those calls. So we encourage providers to join those calls and ask those specific questions to the experts while they are available.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from board members? Going once, and twice, and thrice. It wouldn't be twice if it weren't thrice. Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, our next presentation will be on the feeding of children. Our presenters are Mr. Kyle Gorant, our Deputy Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Dr. Diane Golzinski, Director of the Office of Health and Nutrition Services. They will share information on the distribution of food and meals and an update associated therewith. Gentle folks, good morning.
Good morning, Dr. Eisen. Good morning, board. Thank you for allowing us to give you an update today on our feeding efforts since the closure of in-person learning. We're going to give you an update on the numerous federal programs that we've utilized to help build the foundation or build the legs of the stool to ensure children continue to get fed. And then talk a little bit about our transition into summer feeding. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Golzinski.
Thank you, Kyle. Good morning, everyone. It's great to be back with you. Thank you for having us back again to share what we are doing to assure that the children of Michigan are fed. We're happy to continue to provide these updates and let you know all of the great work that has been happening. So as Kyle said, we really choose to look at all of these different federal programs as the legs of a stool with the children being propped up and being held up by all of the various programs that are available so that we can assure that they have access to food. I'm not sure if you know this or not, but here at the Department of Education, we run over 15 of the federal child nutrition programs. Today, I will be providing an update on just four of those particular programs. So we'll start with the Coronavirus Food Assistance Program. This is a federal program which provides a box of healthy food to families who are coming to school to pick up the meals that are available at school. The boxes may have just dairy products. They may have just meat products. They may have just produce, fresh produce, or it may be a combination of all of those different types of products. The boxes are completely free to the families who are receiving those products and free to the schools who are distributing those products. They arrive at the school site just prior to meal distribution, and they are handed out along with the meals that are provided by the school. These are not intended to replace any portion of those meals provided by the school. It is intended to be in addition to. These boxes were designed as a response to the farmers in our country not having a place to sell their product because of the pandemic. So these are... And Michigan chose to primarily focus on local product where possible within those boxes. Next up is the Summer EBT Program for Children. Here in Michigan, we call that SEBTC. This is also a federal program that is different than the Pandemic EBT, which I will talk about on the next slide. SEBTC is a grant that Michigan has received every year for the past nine years. And we are the only state to have received this grant every year. It is really meant to focus on children who are of low income and have less access to a summer food location. So it is entirely in the summer, from June 1st until the end of August. It provides $30 per child in food benefits on a card, which is similar to a bridge card. It started on June 1, and those 30 benefits each month are really specific, healthy foods. So they can get milk, they can get peanut butter, they can get fruits and vegetables, they can get whole-grain cereals. They cannot buy other products. It's really very, very specific. About 66,000 students across the state of Michigan have been identified and will receive those benefits this summer. And in some cases, those families may receive both Pandemic EBT and SEBTC. The areas that were identified to receive those SEBTC benefits are highlighted in blue on the slide. And they were picked because they are rural in nature and they have the least number of summer food sites. In some counties, there may be only one summer food site, which makes it difficult for some families to be able to travel to that location to get the meals. So this was intended to try to reach those families who had some of those challenges. As I said, we are the only state to have received the grant every year since its inception. And this year, we are only one of four other states and territories that are currently running this particular grant. The next program that I'd like to give you a quick update on is the Pandemic EBT Program. This is a very popular program. Many people really appreciate the fact that we ran this program and we were the first state to do so. We have distributed a ton of funding to a lot of students at this time in two different categories. So those students who were receiving SNAP benefits prior to the pandemic. SNAP is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program that is run out of the Department of Health and Human Services. It's formerly known as food stamps. For those children whose families had those benefits, we have issued over 142 million benefits so far. 739,000 is our number of children. But what we're recognizing is that as we are trying to count those children, if they got it in March and April and then May and June, they may have been counted twice in that number. We are still issuing to this group, so it can be difficult to get a solid number until we are done issuing. For those students who were receiving free or reduced-priced meals at school but whose families were not on SNAP, we have issued over $100 million in benefits to those families, over 518,000 children. Again, those payments are still in process. We are working hard to deal with address changes and address issues. The federal requirements are that if there is an address change that the local post office knows about, the card cannot be forwarded to the new address. So we are working with local districts to get addresses updated so that we can continue to pull the names and addresses of those students and still get them a card. It is our goal to assure that every child who qualifies has a card available to them if their family chooses to use it. And then finally, the Unanticipated School Closure Summer Food Service Program. So Unanticipated School Closure is a provision of the Summer Food Service Program that allows us to feed children when school is closed unexpectedly. And that's the program that we are feeding children under right now. So we have nearly 700 sponsors. As of this morning, it was 698, over 2,700 different locations providing meals to children all across the state. We are able to continue to provide meals under this program until June 30th of 2020. One of the reasons that we are excited about this program is this is the same program that we can use to feed kids on a snow day or if school had to be closed because of a water main break or a teacher's strike or something along that lines where it's closed unexpectedly, we can feed students under this program. In fact, during the polar vortex, we fed students under this program for the very first time ever, and we fed 10,000 meals. So we were very excited about that. With this particular pandemic, you can see that since the middle of March, we have served over 39 million meals to students all over the state. So this really an act of love from our local food service directors and our local districts who have really worked so hard to assure that students all over the state have access to meals while they are at home due to the pandemic. So I said that unanticipated school closures will go until June 30. At that time, the USDA is requiring that everyone switch over to the traditional Summer Food Service Program. So you might be asking yourself, what is the difference? Since unanticipated school closures is a part of the Summer Food Service Program, what is the real difference? Well, the biggest difference between the two is that under unanticipated school closures, we have a waiver that allows anyone who wants to serve meals to be able to do so. Under the traditional Summer Food Service Program, we do not yet have that waiver approved. We have applied, but we have not yet heard back that that waiver has been approved. So that means, starting on July 1, only those who have a qualifying location can provide meals to children. The meals are all free to any child or any family that comes to get meals. The meals are all approved to be non-congregate, meaning they do not have to eat in a group setting. We can provide more than one meal at a time. So just like we are now, where we're providing seven days' worth of meals, we can continue to do so. And we can continue to allow parents to come and pick up those meals. What we can't allow is for meals to be served at a location where under 50% of the children qualify for free or reduced-priced meals. That will happen. So that program starts July 1, and that will continue until the fall school session starts, the 2021 school year. Whenever that starts, everyone will then go to the National School Lunch Program, no matter what format. School starts in the fall. If it's online, if it's in person, or if it's some kind of hybrid, everyone will switch over to the National School Lunch and School Breakfast Programs once that school year officially starts. We are excited that our number of summer sponsors is up from a traditional year. We have just over 120 new sponsors that have signed up to provide meals in the summer of 2020. To give you a little reference point, we typically have between five and 10 new sponsors. And as I said, we're up over 120 now. We typically have around 230, 240 total sponsors providing meals in the summer. And this year, so far, we're up over 380 different sponsors who will be providing meals at different locations around the state. And that will be... Right now, it's a little over 1,450 different locations around the state. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have. I'd like to just point out that the picture on the screen is a little one in Shelby Public Schools, where Shelby Public provides meals that are home-cooked and a lot of local ingredients. And they send in pictures of their children enjoying the meals.
And it's not hard to tell why they are enjoying those meals.
Yes.
Those are some good-looking meals. Thank you very much for that mid-morning presentation on feeding our children. Board members, questions or comments? Dr. Pritchett, a question?
Thank you. The waiver that will allow more locations during the summer, do you have any idea at all when you might hear on that one?
I don't. USDA by regulation has 60 days to respond to our request. And we submitted it, I want to say it was two or three weeks ago. So we will have to wait to see what USDA decides to do with that. I can tell you that nationwide, they have not approved that waiver for any state yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Ms. Fecto, a comment?
Yeah. I just wanted to thank you for your work. You know, my husband's a teacher. I know his school district has done a lot to reach out to the community. And there are families that really are dependent on this, especially if folks or parents aren't working. And it's a wonderful effort, and I appreciate all your work. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fecto. Dr. Pugh, a comment?
Yes, and thank you for all of your work and for how the department just stepped up and made sure that our children had well-balanced and nutritious meals, not just them, but families as well. My question, and I don't know exactly who it goes here. But, and Dr. Rice, you and I have had a lot of discussions about this, but we know that nutrition goes hand in hand with physical activity. And so just that we're being mindful of that because we know that some children have been in their homes for quite some time. Yes, they will get out more. And, you know, we don't know what the fall will look like. So just that we're thinking about that. I do know, in speaking here locally, that some of our summer camps have been postponed and/or canceled. So just making sure that we're thinking about these two things hand in hand. And again, Dr. Rice, we've talked about some of the things that we can do in addition to the normal physical activity getting underway.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Pugh, you're going to be getting an outreach from Sheila Alice shortly related to our earlier conversation.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Other questions or comments from board members? Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, Mr. Gorant, Dr. Golzinski. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, may I please have a motion to return to the regular meeting to consider a resolution which was added to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by, I believe, Dr. Pritchett. Do I have a second?
Support.
Support by Dr. Pugh. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. May I please have a roll call vote, Marilyn?
Yes. Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yeah.
Ramos Montini absent, Snyder absent, Tilly? Tilly? Okay, moving on. Ulbricht?
Yes.
Five yes.
Okay.
Motion passed.
Very good. Now, may I please have a motion to approve the resolution to eradicate racism and to create more equitable and inclusive schools?
I would like to make that motion. I move to approve the resolution to eradicate racism and to create more equitable and inclusive schools for Black children slash all children.
Okay, so we have a motion by Dr. Pritchett. Do we have a second?
Support.
Support by... Is that Dr. Pugh?
I think it was Michelle. I do support, yes. But Michelle might have gotten in there before I did.
Okay, all right, very good. Any discussion on the resolution? Is there some value to reading this into the record given the fact that it came relatively late? Is there some value to that?
I would suggest that that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, very good. And is that something that... Who would like to do that, President Ulbricht?
I would suggest Judy Pritchett, since she made the motion.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Dr. Pritchett?
All right. Whereas the Michigan State Board of Education provides the leadership and general supervision of Michigan public education, whereas the Michigan State Board of Education and the Michigan Department of Education stand firmly against all acts of individual and systemic racism, whereas we wish to end violence and in general, to end racism. racism, whereas we wish to end violence and injustices, and unequivocally declare that Black lives matter, and that an injustice to one is an injustice to all, whereas we believe that children begin their lives without hatred and bigotry, and that our 831 local school districts and our 56 intermediate school districts must uphold the public's trust by fostering understanding, acceptance, respectful dis- civil, civic, excuse me, discourse, and inclusion among our students when they enter the schoolhouse doors, whereas we believe in the ability of our schools to uplift a community of diverse ideas that recognize and celebrate all the attributes that form children, and hold true to the ideal that we all are created equal, whereas we believe that schools are a vital part of a much larger world and need to play their very substantial role in eradicating racism, whereas we believe that educators should be lifelong learners about race and racism, and should be provided the necessary resources to facilitate discussions of race and racism, to help themselves and students understand history and humanity from diverse points of view, and to challenge themselves and students to ground perceptions in facts. Whereas we believe that as educators grow, they must continue to reflect upon and amend curriculum, training, policies, and systemic practices used in schools to help root out racism, whereas we commend students when they demonstrate leadership in expressing their commitment to improving their world, and whereas we believe that in partnership with the Michigan Department of Education, we must review current and proposed state budgets, standards, policies, legislation, and policy guidance to ensure that they promote equity and aggressively discourage and disrupt practices that allow racial inequalities to persist. Now therefore be it resolved that the Michigan State Board of Education does hereby commit to stand against any and all acts of racism, disrespect, violence, and inequitable treatment of any person, and to provide leadership with the Michigan Department of Education to support local public schools and districts in their efforts to help eradicate racism and create more equitable and inclusive schools for all children.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. We have a motion and a, and a second discussion. I see Mr. McMillan indicates that he has an amendment. Would you like to put that amendment up for discussion initially?
No, I'd like to, after there's been discussion.
Okay. Discussion on the, on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Fecto, a comment?
I just wanted to voice my strong support for this, and thank Judy for her leadership in drafting this, and the, any input from others that provided this, this resolution. I also wanted to just make a comment about, you know, even though I've been pretty much sequestered at home, I have become very aware of the leadership of a lot of the young people in our high schools and elsewhere, who are really providing incredible leadership in their communities to, and demanding change. So I, I am just so moved by, by this, and it's throughout the whole state, within my city in Detroit, and also I, you know, in Livonia, in Birmingham, and, you know, all over the state, that I've seen these young people organizing and leading efforts to make people aware and to demand, and, and to these, you know, institutional racism and, and unfounded fears that have led to the deaths of so many people. So I, I am just very honored to be in an organization where the youth are taking such a strong role. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fecto. Dr. Pugh, a comment?
You're muted.
You're on mute.
I was saying nice stuff, things about you, Michelle. Ditto what Michelle, what board member Fecto said. And I just commend the board, Judy taking the leadership in, in putting this together. I definitely, my heart has been so filled, even in this tragic time, this eye-opening period, by people who are not Black or African-Americans, Latino brothers and sisters, white, young people who have really just stepped up and carried the burden of this movement and this moment. So I cannot be prouder of our board right now for stepping up and calling out racism. You know, myself as a public health professional, we look at racism as our, as a dual pandemic that COVID has only magnified what racism, how it impacts and affects the, the lives of, of African-Americans in particular, Black and Brown communities altogether. Then we have this other issue before, for lack of a better word, where we've seen the brutal murder of George Floyd and others that have been brought to light. So I thank the board for stepping up, calling racism out, and really digging into, to turn things upside down, to see what we can do through our policies, standards, budgets, to be able to, and, and calling out legislation that, that, that promotes and/or does not urgently gut out racism. And so I just, again, commend the board and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Other comments or questions from board members? Comments or questions from board members? Hearing and seeing none?
Well, I mean, I have a, I have a, an amendment.
You ready for the amendment at this point?
Yeah. Yeah, I, and I'm posting it now. I just, you know, unfortunately, the very important protests that have been going on have been, in a lot of people's minds, hijacked by this, you know, looting and rioting, and I think it's, it's unfortunate. I, I, I think we would all agree that the answer to violence is not more violence. You know, the, it's, it's unacceptable and tolerable, the government violence against George Floyd and many others. I, when, when in the legislature, I was probably the leader, not only among Republicans, but I, I probably did more as far as sponsoring legislation regarding engine defense, SWAT raid transparency, civil asset forfeiture reform, removing internal investigations from police departments. I actually had a bill back in 2014 that Rosemary Robinson co-sponsored with me, fought for Fourth Amendment, you know, right protections regarding, you know, cell site simulators, drones, all this that government does to assault our liberties. So, you know, this, you know, but I just, I think that when we're talking about correcting inequities or promoting equity, unfortunately, some people think that that includes violence, and that includes rioting, and so, and looting. And I, I just think that it's important, if we're going to do this, that we also send a message that we're not tolerating it. And so, you know, my, my amendment is whereas we can, at the very end, the last whereas would be whereas we condemn all efforts to remove inequities, real or perceived, by use of rioting and looting, and looting. And then with this, you know, if this is accepted, I can support this resolution.
So we have a, we have a proposed amendment by Mr. McMillan. Do we have a second? And then discussion of the proposed amendment. Dr. Albridge?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? You said this would be in the last whereas. Can you read the whole thing? Because I'm not quite sure where this fits within that.
Well, it would be right after "to persist" and before "now therefore be it resolved."
So attach it to the end. Okay.
Yeah.
So, again, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second for the purposes of discussion?
I seconded, Michelle.
Second by Ms. Fecto. Discussion of the amendment as offered by Mr. McMillan.
Oh. Are we jumping in here? Tom, and, and thank you for your support of, of the resolution, and pointing out, you know, your past efforts and work. I, I have an issue with the terms "real" or "perceived," and then... And, and, and there is a lot of discussion around the rioting and the looting that is taking place. And, and I was happy that in the draft of the resolution that we have before us, we talk about violence, and to me, that, that can get, you know, we say that we stand against violence, and looting and rioting to me, and the mischievous activities that have taken place can, can be violence. Now, there are people who are protesting, and they're using the same protesting means that others have used. You know, we've had protesters at the state capitals who have carried and told it guns, screamed, yelled in people's face in a time where COVID is spewing, could be spewing from their bodies. I just have a problem with that, and I have a problem bringing light to that in this, in this document. Looting is looting. There are people who are provocateurs, who we know have taken advantage of the plight and the pain that this country is going through at this time, and I just don't think that it belongs in this resolution. Right, protesting may end up in people going to jail. There may be someone who kicks a tire out of anger and frustration. Some of the things that we saw, we know were not about this, the protest and the issue at hand. We could go deep into that, because there's various theories on, on what happened that led to some of the things that we saw, seen, and read about.
Well, I mean, I can reply to that. You know, your first question about the real or perceived, you know, I was thinking, one of the things I was thinking is that, you know, some will point to the fact that Detroit Public Schools gets, you know, 41% of, you know, more funding than the statewide average. They get, you know, 27% more than Rochester Schools, 25% more funding than Troy Schools, according to M.D.'s own document, Bulletin 1014. And so some would say that that's, you know, that inequity means that we need to take money away from Detroit Schools and make it more equal, so that the others can have an equal amount that Detroit has. So that was kind of, that and, and others. I mean, some people's inequities, you know, other people may not perceive them to be inequities. I mean, I, there's a lot of perception. So that was, that was all I meant by that. And I just think that, you know, I, you know, the protests are important. I mean, it's outrageous what's, what's, what happened to George Floyd and what happened, you know, the government violence. But I, I just think that especially when we're addressing kids, that they make it very, very clear, because a lot of people, this, you know, these, these looters and rioters have hijacked in many, many people's minds a very important cause, and they've hijacked it, and, and in the name of inequity, in the name of writing inequities, they feel they should be able to either destroy those who have, or take from them who have, through rioting and through looting. And so I, I just think that this is, it's just something that is important when we're talking about this matter. And so that, like I said, with this, with this in there, I can certainly support it. And, I mean, I think we only have five members, so it takes five to, to support it. So I'm just asking that, or that, for it to pass. So I just am asking that that be included.
Can I just, can I get one more thing in? Cassandra, I see, I see that you have a comment. I really, I really think that it's a slippery slope, because see, me personally, I mean, if we're going to put that in there, then I think we also have to talk about a president who had people beat, who were there standing peacefully to walk down the street to do a photo op, holding a Bible, some say upside down. So I mean, I, I would want to put that in there, you know, that, that, you know, we're against presidents putting people's, multi, thousands of people's lives at risk to walk across the street for a photo op. And, and I'm good with the, with it, if we can put that in there.
Dr. Albridge?
Thank you. So I, I see the point you're trying to make, Tom. I, I understand the point you're trying to make, but I do agree with Pam that they are separate issues. This resolution is really talking about the responsibility, in my opinion, in my thought. It's talking about the responsibility of, of schools and educators and what we need to do. And I, I don't think that it, I think it creates a confluence of, of misunderstanding if now we're pulling in something that is not related to what we're, the point that we're trying to make, which is that we have a responsibility to help eradicate racism and inequities that can lead to racist policies or outcomes, or additional challenges, that we have a responsibility to actually be part of the solution, not part of the problem. And I think that talking about quote-unquote rioters and looters, and for someone who wrote a dissertation on, on an uprising, these words are very, very powerful, and they have meaning that far surpasses, I think, what we're trying to, the point that we're trying to make with this resolution. So I would just be cautious about that, because I, I can tell you that, that there is, there's lasting effects to language like that. And, and that's really not what we're trying to get at here. What we're trying to get at is that, that we have a responsibility, that our schools have responsibility, our educators have responsibility, and our students have a responsibility that many of them are choosing to, to utilize at this moment. And I, I think that we're just simply saying that we recognize this, and we support it, and we applaud it.
I mean, just to, to answer that, I mean, just to say, you know, if this was strictly about racism and about, you know, the violence that we've seen recently, you know, against George Floyd and others, that would be one thing. But when you insert the words equity, inequities, or inequities, like I said, to the mind, you know, the minds of riot, some of these rioters and looters, they are doing it because of inequities. They are perceived, or, you know, their inequities, they feel that, that the answer to writing inequities is violence, and, and including looting. And so I just think if we're going to have those terms in here, especially in this day and age, when what we've seen going on, a lot of people agree with the protesters, but when, you know, if we don't say yes, and, and, and those who have hijacked it, I mean, I'm not even explicitly wanting us to say that those who have hijacked it are wrong, but that's, I think we need to make it clear that as a board, we come down against this rioting and looting, and this is not the way that you address inequities, real or perceived.
Can I say two things? And Judy, you have the document in front of you. And where do we mention the word "violence"? Because, because we say that we stand against violence. Because again, I stand against the people who go to the state capital carrying guns. That's violence to me.
But Dr. Pugh, the third whereas says, whereas we wish to end violence and injustices, and unequivocally declare that Black lives matter, that an injustice to one is an injustice to all. So it's, it's hard to be clear about... So, it's hard to be clear about, in the draft resolution, the resolution before you today about our opposition to violence. We wish to end violence.
Do we wish to end rioting? You know, do we condemn rioting and looting?
Well, I personally don't condone rioting or looting. Don't, I condemn it, yes. The resolution before you is explicitly about the eradication of racism. And it's focused on the eradication of racism and the building of more inclusive environments for our young people. And not sure how the rioting and looting has a lot to do with the eradication of racism and our role as school leaders in the eradication of racism. I certainly condemn rioting and looting, but I absolutely support the right to protest.
Right.
Can I just say, I keep saying, I'm just going to say one more thing, but, again, I think that we get here to a slippery slope because I have friends who, friends and organizations that I am aware of who have organized protests that have gone violently wrong, and then they've been blamed for it. These people will say that they're, in their name, in the name of Black Lives Matters, bricks have been thrown, cars have been set afire.
Exactly.
People feel that it's, you know, again, it's not, it's not them that's doing it. And so, I just, I think that, you know, you would have to put way too much in here, Tom, to even explain what we're saying because it may be misconstrued as we're saying that people can't protest when they're not...
We have a request for a comment from Ms. Tilly. Ms. Tilly?
Yes, I was going to elaborate on that, too. As far as there are white males, there are white police officers that are going to some of these locations, breaking windows in some of the store locations, and they've been caught on videotape with protesters trying to stop them and ask, question them, what are they doing? They are trying to incite riots.
Police officers trying to incite riots?
Yes. It's on videotape. One of them was at an AutoZone. So, you can try to Google it if you like and find the video. But there's a lot that's been going on, and maybe you haven't been keeping up with all of it. But another issue is, as African Americans, we're expected to be submissive and be peaceful, even when people are killing us in the street on video. So, I don't think that rioting and looting should be the main thing here, the main theme. That man, George Floyd, was on the ground, helpless, not moving, and the officers had no compassion for his life, for anything, for his health, for anything. They killed him, and they said that he died in the EMS or whatever. That man died right there on the street like a dog.
Right.
So, if people, and it happens constantly in this country. It's happened for years, for decades, for centuries. So, if people get upset and they want to riot, that's your concern? People should be rioting. People should be fighting back. Do I want peace? Do I, yes. I don't feel like violence is the answer, but I definitely understand it because I have a black son. I have a black daughter. And God forbid somebody put their hands on my kids.
I mean, if I can reply, I mean, I definitely agree. It was outrageous. I called, I mean, all those officers should be in prison. Well, I mean, they're due process, but they certainly should, I believe, be in prison. But, I mean, to suggest, I mean, this conversation clearly articulates the need to put this final whereas in there because if, I mean, Tiffany just said that people should be rioting. I mean, you know, so it's not clear. You know, I think we need to make it very clear, or at least, you know, if we can't make it clear, I mean, I can't support this because, you know, when we're putting in words like, you know, equity and trying to write inequities, I, you know, would agree, but not through violence. And, you know, we already have somebody on the board can, you know...
There is violence. There is violence. There has been violence. They, they used to hang black people up with nooses on trees in front of the whole town so that the men, women, and children could watch. There has been a culture of violence. And my race has been constantly attacked. Brutally attacked. So...
That's wrong. Yep. I mean, that's wrong that that happens, for sure.
If we...
It's beyond wrong at this point in life. So, I mean, it just, it just makes me more angry when people start pointing out the reactions to it. It should never happen in the first place for there to be this type of reaction. So, if you stop what's going on, you won't have riots. You won't have looting. People are tired of people getting killed for no reason. Police are going into people's homes and shooting them. That didn't just happen this year. That's been going on.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Our men are not safe, our women are not safe, and our children are not safe. You have George Zimmerman, who killed Trayvon Martin, still, you know, throughout the years having incidents with the law. And he's free while Trayvon is in the ground for walking through his neighborhood. So, if you address the racism, if you address the unwarranted murders, you won't have to worry about riots and looting anyway. So, that should be the focus.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Dr. Albridge and then Dr. Pritchett.
So, I appreciate the passion around this. I really do. But I just want to, I want to bring back the fact that this, this resolution is meant to be something that is continuous into the future, that it's not just about today, but it's about what we're doing moving forward. And the resolution does not speak to the protests. It's, again, it speaks to the responsibility of schools, but it doesn't make reference necessarily to the protest, with the exception of including the words Black Lives Matter, which are not solely held in this moment that we have today. So, I think that the inclusion of Tom's request is out of context with the resolution as a whole because it is not about the last 10 days. It is about the next 10 years. And so, I think that's the mindset that we really need to keep in mind here. And with all due respect, Tom, if we add that last whereas in here, then it becomes very confusing. And I think it, you know, if you're looking at this down the road in the future, that piece of it isn't going to make sense. There's not going to be a contextual understanding of why that's there. And so, I think we need to stick with what is it do we really want to say for the long term as opposed to for the here and now? And so, I would, I would not support it for many reasons, but one of which being, in the grand scheme of the resolution, it just doesn't make sense.
Okay. Dr. Pritchett, Ms. Fecto, Dr. Pugh.
Thank you. And as usual, Cassandra has summed up my concerns. Tom, from the beginning, at least my personal focus on this resolution has been the fact that public schools are the great equalizers, or that's their primary function. I believe that down in my gut and always have. We always haven't done that, but we are certainly one of the closest institutions that has that as our charge. And because of that, that is the central theme of the resolution, is to focus on public schools and, as Cassandra so aptly put it, to look to the future as to what educators can do, as to what students can do. What is our primary responsibility as a State Board of Education member, as a body, and as public schools and intermediate school districts in Michigan? Because we accept all, and so, we have, we have a wonderful opportunity to be able to touch all also and to influence. And that is the intent of the resolution, to lay that out and say, we're ready to take that step and take it aggressively at this point. The events that have happened in the last couple of weeks, and I'm going to show my age here, have been phenomenal. And I think we can all agree to that. The events of the protests where our young people have taken control, where activists have taken control and have made statements and have moved a nation and have moved a world to the point that we cannot, under any circumstances, allow this to go on for anybody any longer. And so, it's going to take time, as change always does, but it can start with schools also. We have a massive responsibility. So, the intent from the beginning was to focus on schools. So, I just wanted to say that as this discussion continues.
Thank you. Dr. Pugh, Ms. Fecto.
You know, I think in adding to what Dr. Albridge said and what Gordon Burr, um, Tilly said, you know, more than it just being the distraction, the statement, I think it can perpetuate this thought that African Americans have and that people are more concerned about their property than they are about all the other stuff that we've talked about today. And so, that brings that focus into this resolution that, to me, really is about people. It's really about our children. It's really about the education system, as Dr. Pritchett just pointed out, is one of the most vital components to the well-being of our children. I have some statistics here. And I don't, you know, when we look at COVID, and, you know, we had the conversation about COVID, and I hope that we are looking at the disparities, and Michelle, you were talking about this earlier, that we have some communities and black communities that have been impacted this far greater, 4.5 times more likely to die from COVID than whites, seven times more likely than our Latino brothers and sisters, and somewhere around four or three times more likely than our indigenous brothers and sisters. When we look at incarceration rates, we are, blacks are far more likely to be incarcerated than any of those populations that I just told you. We're 50% of Michigan's prison population and only 14% of Michigan's population. We could, I could go on and on about how dire the statistics are, but I do want to mention that when we look at COVID, we know that, you know, we can look at the many things that attribute to why African Americans are more susceptible to contracting or dying from COVID, but we have to think about our frontline workers and what, who are our frontline workers? Why are they, why do they have the jobs where they can't work at home? Because of education is greatly linked to how a child lands. We can look at the prison population, where 68% of our prison population does not have a high school diploma. And we could go on and on and on. So, keeping the focus on why education is so important, why we are working much more urgently and so grateful and thankful for these young people for pushing us in the way that they are with all the passion that they have, that, from what I understand, I wasn't alive, Judy, but from what I understand, is great passion that's even greater than in the 60s. And so, yes, they are going to express themselves in ways that might not be palatable to many of us, but we do know that it is warranted. Violence, we should never, as a public health person, I never want to see violence. Racism is violent. It's one of the most violent acts that has been here for hundreds and hundreds of years. We don't want to see violence, but we know that there are protests that may not always come off as peaceful, but they are doing what they need to do, and that is the majority of what our children are looting us in this movement right now. So, make it be about the people, not about property, and we don't want to appear to be that way. And that may not be your intent, but it could appear that way.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Fecto?
Yeah, thank you. I know I'm white, but I am the mother of two black sons who I raised from, and adopted from when they were one and two and are now 29 and 30. I also am the mother of six brown children of Mexican-American descent and two white children. And it's given me, it's given me a perspective where I can see the difference of how my children are being treated. I see when my black sons, even when they were like six and seven years old, and they met, people never equate them as being my sons, when I would walk into stores and I would see them, these little kids being followed through grocery stores by, you know, undercover folks, just waiting for them to do something wrong. I mean, it's, and my, also, my sons in my community in Detroit, where the police officers repeatedly, when they became teenagers, would arrest them or would stop them and, you know, just frisk them, you know, one time taking their ID, throwing it on the ground and arresting them, and then saying they, anyway, there's just so many incidents that have opened my eyes to the disparity in treatment and how it mentally affects these people, that, you know, it has such an impact on their health and well-being, their anxiety, their understanding of who they are, and if they're good or bad. It, I've just seen it in a way that, anyway, I just wanted to express that even though I am not black, I do feel like I have a heightened awareness of the inequities and violence towards these young people who were doing nothing wrong. I even had my son, Terrell, went to the park at 3:00 in the afternoon, and a cop came and made him give him his shirt. I bought him a red shirt, and he said he was a gang member and took his shirt away. I mean, he comes home without a shirt. Just crazy, crazy stuff. My black sons have been arrested several times, and a good thing I had a lawyer to get them off, where their white friends are left, you know, are not arrested. So, I know that this exists, and I just wanted to say I understand and feel, especially what Tiffany had said about just the, you know, the inaction, that it continues and that it affects their well-being, just their mental health and well-being in profound ways, profound ways. So, but I also wanted to point out, in the last... ways, profound ways. So, but I also wanted to point out in the last, where it says, now therefore be it resolved, it does say that the Michigan State Board of Education does hereby commit to stand against any and all acts of racism, disrespect, violence, and inequitable treatment. So we do stand against violence. It says it right there in the final resolution. And I think that that does speak to the fact that it's any acts of violence, any and all acts of violence. So I think we've captured your sentiments, Tom, in that we are standing against violence. I am, you know, I tend to be more, you know, I really believe in the lessons of nonviolence from Martin Luther King, Gandhi, you know, I believe in those deeply and understand, I think that violence is counterproductive to, which is why I think there are antagon, you know, people who are engaging in violence. I mean, some people, I mean, some of it is just anger, understandable anger, but I think it's counterproductive to the end cause of getting a resolution. So I don't support violence of any kind. I don't support looting of any kind. I don't, I don't, because it's, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt the cause in the end. And that's my, my biggest objection to it. So, but I do think we do address it pretty clearly in the final resolution, that we stand against any acts of, any and all acts of violence. So I, I feel like it's, your sentiments are captured in that, in that quote at the end. That's my points. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fecto. And just a note, two notes. One, the reference to opposition to violence begins with the third whereas and ends, as you point out, in the resolved. So it's coming and going in this resolution that the board is not supportive of violence, and that would incorporate, I would argue, rioting and looting. It was Gandhi who said, "An eye for an eye leaves the whole world blind." And certainly I agree with that, with that spirit. Other board comments or questions? Comments or questions from board members?
When we talk about violent acts, some rioting and looting, and looting definitely falls under violence. I think as Board Member Tilly pointed out, sometimes protests and protesting can be misconstrued as such. So I mean, I think that there, again, there's a whole lot that we could discuss as we talk about what we mean by protesting and what we mean by peaceful protesting, because what I perceive as peaceful protesting may not be perceived as peaceful to others. So I do just want to point that out because somewhere in there, we talk about our young people, and I don't want them to think that we're speaking of in any way that we're controlling or telling them how they protest. I think that we all understand what we mean when we talk about rioting and looting. So it gets really complex there.
So Dr. Pew, to your point, the whereas to which you refer is whereas we commend students when they demonstrate leadership in expressing their commitment to improving their world, and that extends to protests as well. I don't think anybody on the board would argue against young people's or older people's right to protest.
Or as has been pointed out, civil disobedience, you know, because some people can look at that as being riotous, and that's not necessarily the case, especially, you know, if you have cannons and tear gas pointed at you, you know, it can become something that's not meant to be riotous, can turn that way. But I'm good with the resolution as is, and I think you understand why I'm not supporting the amendment.
Fair enough. Ms. Fecto, you've got a comment in the chat. Do you want to share that publicly or is the comment sufficient?
Well, I, it was Pam picked it up, but, you know, I do support civil disobedience, which is the, you know, Martin Luther Kings and Gandhi so effectively used. And some people may consider civil disobedience to be not peaceful demonstrating, but I think if you're not engaging in destruction or, you know, whatever, it's, you know, I guess it's, it's, it could be a gray area where some people might see it as one thing and others as, you know, another. But I support people's rights to engage in civil disobedience, provided that they're not hurting another person. So, I mean, physically hurting another person. Economically hurting is fine, if that's their right to do. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Fecto. Ms. Tilly, comment?
I want to clear up, it's not that I'm in favor of rioting or looting. I feel like we are at a point where things have boiled over, and I understand it. And this has brought us, all of the protests, all of the rioting, all of the looting, although, like I said, there were some people that were starting that just to heighten things. But you have to understand, all of that has drawn enough attention to where we are even having this conversation, where this conversation is being had all over the world, where people are now standing up against the violence. It has never happened like this before in history. You had different people, you had different people that would support ending slavery or different things, but to the point where there are so many people speaking up, speaking out, so many leaders, so many citizens, you have, we've never seen anything like this. And then to piggyback on what Dr. Pew was saying about the Lansing protests, the governor was getting threats. The legislators were feeling under duress while they were trying to do their jobs, to the point where one had to come to work with men who were armored to protect her. So if we want to talk about that, don't forget about what was going on in Lansing that you were okay with. And that was, that's not acceptable. Standing over people while they are trying to do their jobs, while they are trying to serve with weapons, that is harassment. That is ugly. And there's definitely, and then calling people and giving death threats. There's definitely other ways that people can protest in those situations too. So wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. We have a, we have a motion on the table. We have an amendment to the motion. That amendment is put up by Mr. McMillan. Mr. McMillan, would you like to speak once again to the amendment?
Yeah, please. I mean, I understand that some people are wanting to make sure this is not, my amendment is not perceived as saying that protesting, you know, I agree with civil disobedience and with protesting, but, you know, if we want to make it clear that we're talking about destruction of property, I'm fine with changing my amendment to make it clear that I'm talking about the destruction of property in Michigan by rioting and looting. And I just, you know, I could, you know, we could change it to say that. I just, based on this conversation, I think I'm even more inclined to say this has, something like this has to be in there because, you know, we've had one member say people should be rioting, you know, some, you know, another talking about what the definition of peaceful protesting might mean or might not mean. I mean, you know, I, I think that if we are going to talk about writing inequities, that we need to make it clear that we're not talking about, you know, that we're not talking about looting and rioting. And I know violence is in there, but, you know, how do you define violence? It sounds like some are saying that, you know, it doesn't include rioting. And what is rioting? It might include, you know, so if we're all against destruction of property, then let's just make it that. I just think that it's, if we're going to do this and talk about correcting inequities, we need to make it clear, because what we're seeing on the TV and, you know, around the country, many are saying that to write inequities, you can loot and destroy and do it with violence. And I just think that, you know, we need to be explicit here. Otherwise, it could be taken incorrectly, could be taken to support rioting.
Okay, we have, we have a base motion on the table. We have an amendment to that on the table.
No, I'm not amending it. I mean, if this would be more acceptable, that's fine. Oh, I'm sorry, my amendment. Yes, I, yes, my amendment, you're right.
Right. So the question becomes, are you in fact recommending an amendment to your amendment?
No, 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 no. I mean, if that would help, if that would help others support it, then I would. But if not, then we can just go with the original one and...
Okay, very good. Dr. Pew, then Ms. Fecto?
Tom, I think that it's the same thing. Again, I don't want us to send a signal out there that we are more concerned and, or mess up this resolution when it's about people. It's about a very vital system that contributes to the well-being and the future of the success of our children. And then we put in there this talk about property. And again, it would send out a really bad signal to me. I'm not, I am not as concerned with the property as I am with people. And when you say some people said rioting is good, there are going to be some people that I, let me be clear on what I said, if you're referring to me. There are some protests that may appear to be riotous. You might perceive that as being a riot. As Board Member Tilly said, that we have a history of controlling people and their response to, as victims, what their response is to being victimized is. And when I say we, as a country. I also just want to point out that I also said that we have a president who pointed, who sprayed tear gas, pointed weaponry at people standing in a peaceful stance. So again, if we're going to put anything in here, I think that something like that belongs in here. We've talked about protests that have happened where the doors of our state Capitol have been moved and people going in with guns. And so you're, again, on a slippery slope and we're changing what the focus should be. And I agree, the conversation in and of itself has changed where the focus should be.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Ms. Fecto?
My question was, what was your plan B, Tom? What were you suggesting as an alternative? Not that, you know, I'm just curious to see what that would be. And, but again, I do think that the, therefore be it resolved, does really make a strong statement that we stand against any acts of disrespect or violence. And I think it's very clear that we don't support violent action of any kind. So I do understand your sentiments and appreciate them, but I think we've captured them in that last thing. But I would be curious to see what your alternative statement or amendment would be.
I put it in the chat, you know, if that would be better to make it clear that I'm talking about, you know, destruction of property and lives, actually, but property and lives in Michigan by rioting and looting. If that, you know, if that helps define what I mean by rioting and looting, I'm not saying that a protest is rioting. I think that protests are wonderful, and I've participated in protests in the past. And so, I mean, I certainly think civil disobedience and all that's fine, but, yeah, just I, you know, if that would help, but I don't know, it's not sounding like it would, that I can make it more explicit what I'm talking about. And that's whereas we condemn all efforts to remove inequities real or perceived through the destruction of property in Michigan by rioting and looting.
I wonder if that would, and Pam, you're suggesting that we'd also add carrying guns or...
And the President of the United States walking across the street pointing guns and cannons and spraying tear gas on people.
All right, board, we have, let's pull it together, board. We have a, we have a motion. We have an amended, we have an amendment to the motion. Mr. McMillan has suggested an amendment to his amendment. Without objection, we can consider the amendment to the amendment as written in the chat. It reads...
No, I haven't, I haven't made that. I said if that would help, and I haven't heard anybody say that they would support it if I included it. So, I mean, I'll just, we don't need to go to that extent, amendment to an amendment. We could just stick with the original. It's not going to help any, anybody come to supporting it.
Fair enough. So we have the amendment as originally offered, moved and seconded the discussion associated therewith. Is there any more discussion associated with the amendment? Hearing none. If we could have a roll call vote on the amendment to the base motion, please. Marilyn, if you would take the roll call vote?
I will. Fecto?
No.
McMillan?
Well, we didn't read it. Whereas we condemn all efforts to remove inequities real or perceived by use of rioting and looting. And I would vote yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pew?
No.
Ramos Montini absent. Snyder absent. Tilly? Tilly?
No.
Thank you. Albrecht?
No.
Amendment fails.
Okay, and now a vote on the, on the base motion on the resolution as introduced and seconded and discussed. Marilyn, if you could do a roll call vote?
Final comment.
I'm sorry, yes, please.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't want to oppose this. I support much of the spirit of the resolution for sure, but if we can't explicitly condemn rioting and looting, especially given that at least one of our members said that we should, people should, quote, people should be rioting, you know, I think there's enough, like I said, you know, in the name of writing inequities, people are rioting and looting, destroying property there. And if we can't say that...
People are being killed. People are losing their lives.
So, I mean, I...
Ms. Tilly, if we could, if we could do this consecutively, please?
I'll just pass because we can't explicitly condemn rioting and looting. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Tilly? Ms. Tilly?
People are getting killed. People are losing their lives. You're worried about personal property. People are losing their lives. You can get property back. You cannot get your life back. And that, that should be the main focus, preserving life. We want peace. We all want peace. I also want progress. I hope you do too.
Yep.
Okay, any more comments on the base resolution? Hearing none. Marilyn, if we could do a roll call vote, I'm sorry, Dr. Pew?
Yeah, I think we need to very carefully here for McMillan because you keep repeating that someone said that they want rioting and looting. That's not what we're saying here. We said that we define it differently. We said that we have seen things in the state and this country that we could say has provoked and/or has... could, uh, say has provoked, uh, and/or has, um, taken over and, and people who were peacefully or who were protesting, uh, in a way that did not produce violence or put anybody's lives at, at, at stake, but has been used and made it seem as if it was coming from those who were out there protesting. We said that we have leadership in this country who have shown us violent acts. And what you're doing could come off as you not supporting, um, this resolution and coming up with a argument that does not exist. We don't want this to be the focus.
Okay, any other, um, any other reflections before we vote on the resolution?
Um, this is Michelle.
Ms. Fecto, bless you.
Yeah, I just, uh, an appeal to Tom. I, it would be great if this could be a, uh, unanimous, um, uh, vote. I, and I, I would, with the understanding that in the last be it resolved, that our standing against any acts of disrespect and violence, that we mean that any acts of disrespect and violence from any party, that that's what that means. Um, and I think it does capture your sentiments of, uh, that we do, that we stand against these, these acts. Um, I would hope that you would, you know, making it clear that that does include, um, looting and, you know, those types of things, uh, that, that it is incorporated, those sentiments are in there and that you could vote for it. Um, so that's my only comment.
I'd like to, but just based on the discussion, I, I think, you know, people should be rioting is what one said. And, I mean, it, you know, I know that they didn't mean necessarily destruction of property. So if you want to make it that clear, but, you know, it's obviously words have meaning and, and, you know, violence can be defined different ways apparently. So I just think that it's important, given what's been happening around the country, to explicitly condemn it. Um, and if we're not willing to do that, then, you know, I, I, I'm concerned what people will read, how we can, you know, what, by what means we can, uh, quote unquote, promote equity or, or correct inequities.
You know, Tom, and, and I'm, I'm just, I'm just going to call it out, words can also be sound bites. And that's what it sounds like to me. And I have the greatest respect for you, but in this situation, it sounds like it's sound bites. We've clarified what we're talking about. And again, I, I hope that the message that comes out of here isn't that this board, this body supports looting and rioting. We do support protests and we know that protests can come out in any form when people are sick and tired of being sick and tired. And we have young people who are leading us in a way that are going to change this country in a way that none of us could ever do. And I'm very proud of that, I stand boldly on that. Uh, and, and, and I'm, I'm just disappointed in you because it sounds like it's a cockroach. And it's a sound bite.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Pugh. Any other, uh, any other reflections? Um, hearing none. Marilyn, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Fecto?
Yes.
McMillan?
Pass.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Ramos Montini absent, Snyder absent, Tilly?
Yes.
Albridge?
Yes.
Five yeses, pa- motion passes.
Thank you, Marilyn. Uh, our next topic is Michigan's Top 10 Strategic Education Plan. The presentation will include information on the current mission and vision, amended guiding principles and potential goals and metrics for the updated plan. Following the presentation, we will engage in further conversation with the Board about the mission, vision, guiding principles, goals and metrics for Michigan's Strategic Education Plan. Presenters today are Chief Deputy Superintendent Ms. Sheila Alice and our Director of Strategic Planning and Implementation, Ms. Kelly Siciliano Carter. Uh, there will be a PowerPoint presentation. Ladies, welcome. Board members, so that you are, uh, aware, uh, we will have the presentation and, um, uh, we will engage in, uh, a little bit of discussion, a break for lunch, and depending upon, uh, our need, return to the discussion after lunch. Uh, Ms. Alice and Ms. Carter, good morning.
Good morning, thank you, Dr. Rice. Good morning, Board members. Thank you, um, for the opportunity for Mrs. Siciliano Carter and I to once again present to you on the topic of Michigan's Top 10 Intend Strategic Education Plan. Today's presentation is a continuation of the presentation last month on this topic. Today, we're going to present to you a full set of components that we recommend be included in a revised Top 10 Plan. So we've structured our agenda today around those components. So today's agenda will include, um, a revisit of mission and vision statements, amended guiding principles, proposed goals, potential metrics, um, and then suggestions for collecting contributions. Then we're going to pivot to Dr. Rice, who will facilitate the continued discussion with you on the proposed revisions to Top 10. And as Dr. Rice indicated, if we need to continue that discussion and conversation after lunch, we can certainly do that. Um, I would like to put on the slide now our, um, mission statement and vision statement. Um, last month, we shared with you our current Top 10 and 10 mission statement and vision statement. The mission statement is to support learning and learners. And the vision statement is that every learner in Michigan's public schools will have an inspiring, engaging and caring learning environment that fosters creative and critical thinkers who believe in their ability to positively influence Michigan and the world beyond. We recommend that the mission statement and vision statement that you see on this slide, um, which is from our current Top 10 and 10 Plan, transfer as is to the revised Top 10 Plan. So in other words, we recommend that these two statements do not change. Moving on to the amended guiding principles. In a strategic plan, the guiding principles provide a framework or a foundation for the plan. We are proposing six guiding principles for our revised plan. We created these six principles based on the input that was collected from the almost 50 interviews, um, that were conducted earlier this year, including those with Board members, with MDE staff and with external educators and stakeholders. We also use the feedback that we received from the almost 12,000 submitted surveys, where responders provided us with 20, with 2,900 written comments and with almost 5,000 written goals. The amended guiding principles that we are recommending maintain the spirit of the original guiding principles. And so let's take a few minutes and look at each of these guiding principles. For the ease of today's presentation, I've numbered the guiding principles, but please know that the numbers do not equate to any order of importance of them. So guiding principle number one, which you see on this slide, is about equitable access to high-quality instruction for all of our students. It reads, "All students have access to high-quality instruction regardless of their gender, ethnicity, race, economic status, native language, or physical, emotional, and cognitive abilities." The second guiding principle recognizes the important role that educators play in student learning, and it reads, "All educators are encouraged to be creative and innovative. All educators are adequately compensated and respected for their professionalism and have the resources, support, and training needed to educate students." The third guiding principle emphasizes that the student is at the center of all learning. And it reads, "All students have voice in their own learning, feel connected to their schools, and have authentic, meaningful relationships with educators." Providing students with opportunities to dream and to achieve those dreams is reflected in the fourth guiding principle. It reads, "All students are provided every opportunity to achieve the broadest range of life dreams." We know that families and communities are critical partners in the education of children. The fifth guiding principle reflects these important partnerships. It reads, "Families and communities are essential partners of teachers, support staff, and administer, administrators in the education of students." The sixth guiding principle pertains to the department's support of the unique learning needs of Michigan's 1.5 million students. And it reads, "In support of students and their achievement, the Michigan Department of Education is coordinated and aligned and collaborates with school districts and a wide range of partners and stakeholders." To recap, we are recommending the six guiding principles that you see on this slide, which as I said earlier, were created based on input from interviews and feedback from surveys, maintain the spirit of the guiding principles in the original Top 10 and 10 Plan, and provide a strong foundation for our revised strategic plan. On this slide, we've listed our eight proposed goals. You heard me say last month that these goal, eight goals emerged during our interviews with stakeholders or were ranked as very important based on the survey results which we shared with you earlier this year. Dr. Rice has discussed many of these goals with you during previous state Board of Education meetings. There's one change to the goals on this slide as compared to the eight goals presented to the Board last month. The goal pertaining to teacher shortage, which is listed towards the bottom of the screen, it's the seventh goal listed out of eight. It was changed from, address the teacher shortage, which we presented last month, to what you see on the slide, increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. This change was made based on the recommendation and the rationale from Mrs. Fecto with support from other Board members. So as we think about these goals and, um, adding them to our revised plan, I think it's important that the goals that are selected or are approved are enduring, they're sustainable, regardless of our circumstances and the environment. We want them to have relevance and meaning and exist beyond, uh, the pandemic crisis. The goals approved by the Board are those that should guide and influence decisions regarding public education in our state. I'm not going to read the eight goals to you now because they're going to appear on the next set of slides related to metrics. So moving on to metrics, we continue to emphasize that a metrics, that metrics are a critically important component of a revised Top 10 Plan. Metrics are noticeably missing in the current plan, and so we believe they are essential to be part of our revised plan. Metrics are commonly used to track and compare performances over time. They help us monitor progress towards achieving each of the goals. And then once the goals are approved, we recommend that at least one, if not multiple metrics or data points, are used for each goal. For the goal, improve literacy achievement. We recommend that we use student proficiency percents for three data sets. State assessment data, national assessment data to compare Michigan to other states, and benchmark or local assessment data. So for state assessment results, we recommend using the percent of students proficient on the third grade M-step for ELA. For national assessment results, we recommend using the percent of students proficient on the fourth grade National Assessment of Educational Progress, otherwise known as NAP, for reading. For benchmark results, we recommend using results from local district-administered benchmark assessments, specifically the percent of students proficient on the third grade benchmark assessments for ELA. And for the metrics listed, we recommend that we collect and report state, national, and local data for all students and all groups of students by gender, race, ethnicity, students with disabilities as compared to students without disabilities, students who are economically disadvantaged as compared to students who are not economically disadvantaged, students who are English learners as compared to students who are not English learners, migrant students as compared to students who are not migrant students, and students who are homeless as compared to students who are not homeless. For the goal, expand early childhood learning opportunities, we recommend three metrics. The number and percent of children served in GSRP, the number of children eligible for GSRP, and the rating of pre-K programs from the National Institute for Early Education Research, otherwise known as NEAR, out of Rutgers University. This is an annual rating system that includes 10 different benchmarks of quality. For the goal, improve the health, safety, and wellness of all learners, we recommend a broad array of data points in order to address all three aspects of this goal, health, safety, and wellness. Our recommended metrics include average daily student participation in school breakfast programs, percent of students who were physically active for a, for a total of at least 60 minutes per day on five or more of the past seven days, percent of students who have on-track attendance, percent of students who have been bullied on school property in the past 12 months, percent of students who felt sad or hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more in a row during the past 12 months, percent of students who seriously considered attempting suicide during the past 12 months, percent of students who used tobacco products and/or electronic vapor products during the past 30 days, percent of students who used drugs during the past 30 days, and the number of students who received services from school mental health providers during the school year. For the goal, expand secondary learning opportunities for all students, we have identified metrics related to five different secondary programs. For career technical education, we recommend the number and percent of students enrolled in CTE programs based on the overall student population, the number and percent of students who complete CTE programs based on the total number of students enrolled in CTE programs, we recommend the number and percent of CTE students who received a high school diploma, and the number and percent of students who received a credential. For advanced placement, we recommend the percent, the number and percent of students enrolled in AP courses compared to the total student population, the number and percent of AP tests taken, and the number and percent of students earning credit for AP tests. For international baccalaureate programs, we recommend the number of students enrolled and the number of students earning credit from IB tests. For early middle college, we recommend the percent of students enrolled in an early middle college program who, who successfully obtained their high school diploma and learn, and earned at least one of the following early middle college outcomes. 60 transferable college credits, an associate's degree, a professional certification, a Michigan Early Middle College Association certificate, and acceptance in... and acceptance into a registered apprenticeship. For dual enrollment, we recommend the number of students enrolled and the average college credits earned during high school. We recommend that we collect and report state data for these five programs for all students as well as for all groups of students as listed on this slide, which are the same groups as the ones that I read on the slide for early literacy. For the proposed goal to increase the percentage of all students who graduate from high school, we recommend using the graduation rates for students who graduate in four years, in five years, and in six years. And again, we recommend that we collect and report state data for all students and for all groups of students as listed on this slide. For the proposed goal, increase the percentage of adults with a post-secondary credential. The recommended metric is reporting the number of adults with a certificate or a degree. This goal is also an important one for our governor, Governor Whitmer. The governor has established the goal of 60% of adults in Michigan to have a post-secondary credential by 2030. For the proposed goal, to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage, we recommend three metrics: the number of teaching positions filled compared to the number of teaching positions unfilled by discipline on the critical shortage list, the number of disciplines on the critical shortage list, and the percent of teachers by ethnicity compared to the percent of students by ethnicity. A potential metric or metrics for the proposed goal provide adequate and equitable funding is still under consideration. Dr. Rice and I have been in conversation with people who work in this field, and we are in the process of proposing a metric or two to bring to you. This concludes the metrics portion of the presentation, and now we'll move to the topic of contributions. As we all know, Michigan is a local control state. We also know that our 831 districts each have a unique set of needs. So to establish specific strategies for districts within the plan may not meet the unique needs and the capabilities of all districts. You've heard me say, and you've heard Dr. Rice talk about, a number of expected outcomes from a revised Top 10 Plan. And one of those expected outcomes is that there's an improved understanding of the plan and an expanded support for it. One of the ways that we can achieve this outcome is by making Michigan's revised Top 10 Plan a collective document, one where districts see their connection to the plan and their role in its implementation. We really want districts to feel encouraged and empowered to develop actions for advancing the goals within the revised Top 10 Plan that reflect what is needed for them. And then, we want districts to be able to share their efforts through a common online platform, highlighting the work that they are doing so that it can be viewed and replicated by other districts. Think about this as a repository of contributions, where districts will post their actions or their efforts to implement each of the goals. And then, the department will play a role in implementing the revised plan as well, by supporting districts with their implementation, by providing guidance to districts on ideas that they may have, and by being a resource for districts. And this role that I just described for MDE is reflected in the sixth guiding principle. So I thank you for the opportunity to present to you this morning. There are a few staff members that I'd like to recognize for their conversations and contributions on metrics that were presented today. They include Ms. Leah Breen, the Director of the Office of Educator Excellence, Dr. Paula Daniels, Director of the Office of Educational Supports, Dr. Diane Golzinski, Director of the Office of Health and Nutrition Services, Mr. Richard Lauer, Director of the Office of Preschool and Out-of-School Time Learning, Dr. William Pearson, Director of the Office of Partnership Districts, and Dr. Brian Piles, Director of the Office of Career and Technical Education. I truly appreciate their willingness to engage in multiple conversations with me on possible metrics, and I wanted to recognize the expertise that they brought to this conversation. So thank you, Board, for the opportunity to share with you the full set of components that we recommend be included in a revised Top 10 Plan and for our recommendations for each of those components. And so now, Dr. Rice, I will turn the presentation back to you to begin our discussion with the board.
Thank you, Ms. Alice, Ms. Carter. I appreciate your presentation today. Board, if we could look at guiding principles first, and if you would be so kind, Ms. Alice, is to put those six guiding principles up, the one slide that has all six guiding principles, if we could review those and the board could share with us on guiding principles. Any questions or comments specifically on the six guiding principles as presented for you today? Guiding principle comments. Dr. Pugh?
Actually, I put the comment in there before I knew that we were going to go in this direction. I guess, do you want to go through it first and then we'll...
Yeah, if we could. If we could focus on the guiding principles first, and then we'll move over to goals and subsequently, metrics. Guiding principles. Any questions or comments about the guiding principles as noted? Ms. Fecto, you had a comment in the chat earlier.
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment the goal number one. I thought it was very inclusive and made it very clear. Didn't just say the word "all," but it actually spelled out what that meant, and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much. So a reference to guiding principle number one. And again, just to note, these are our guiding principles. These are overarching our goals. They're not the goals themselves, but they are the principles under which we and local school educators would operate. Anything else on guiding principles?
I guess I would. I think when we looked at the strategic plan, we've been putting it together for some time, and I think that it is coming together again very nicely. With the COVID pandemic coming on board, I think we've kind of like looked at these guiding principles, goals, on and on. And I do think that we should probably do the same, given the resolution that we just discussed as well as the purpose of that resolution. And will we be taking another lens to this? I know you're going to be talking about some of this as we move forward in the agenda, but how do we take into account the time that we're in right now and what has been brought to light for many of us?
Sure, I think it's a good point. We began this work with an equity lens, and if we in the department hadn't, the 12,000 people that responded to our survey, the four dozen people that were individually interviewed that represent organizations, either education organizations or organizations affected by education, certainly brought that lens to our work. I believe that as we focus additionally, not simply on the COVID-19 pandemic, but if you will, the other pandemic to which people have rightly referred during this period of time, this effort to, this longstanding enduring effort to eradicate racism in our community, I think everything is going to be focused on that. If you look at our metrics, we're not simply talking about aggregate metrics, but rather disaggregated metrics, disaggregated based on race or ethnicity, socioeconomic status, disability, English language learner status, migrant status, homeless status. So we really are trying to look at how we do what we do across the state and what differences are there among children as a way of improving education for specific groups of young people, recognizing that specific groups of young people don't always get educated by themselves in the state, and figuring out how we can do better in districts that educate small proportions of children that have historically not had the same success, not been given the same focus, attention, resources in schools. So I would argue that it's embedded in our approach to metrics, in our guiding principles, but certainly, we're going to redouble our efforts in that regard. Yes?
Oh, and as I give it more thought, I do know that when I first came onto the board that closing the gaps of disparity was a goal of the department. And it fell off, and we said that it was embedded. And I think it's not necessarily that we're moving in a direction. I think we're now being called to move much faster, to go much faster in how we do that. And so I would be intrigued to see, you know, if, and if not, then why can we not put closing the gaps of disparity for those who are fearing the worst in our education system? And from a mathematical standpoint, when you do that, you also, when you do something for those who are performing the worst, then obviously, we know mathematically, that's going to pull up our numbers and improve our numbers as a whole. And we know when we say "numbers," we're again talking about people. And so we're improving the lives and the outcomes of all the children if we can do it for those who are fearing the worst, which in our state, it is African-Americans and Black and Brown children, namely, Black children and our Black boys. And I think just being bold about calling that out says a lot, and being bold about saying it versus it being implied says a lot. And then, it ties into what we said we were doing in a resolution. And I know you're going to be speaking on this issue later as well.
Right. And so, just to note, I don't think a lot is left for the imagination in this draft Strategic Education Plan. We're recommending metrics. There haven't been metrics over the first four years of the state's Strategic Education Plan. It's hard to progress if you don't have any metrics by which to measure your progress. We're not simply suggesting measuring, but we're talking about disaggregated measurement. That's the way to get to progress, by really laying it bare. And I appreciate your support in that. And I know that you'll work hard in collaboration with us to improve those metrics. Other board members, comments or questions? Comments or questions on guiding principles? We have a comment from Ms. Fecto.
I also wanted to commend the guiding principle number two, which speaks to holding up our educators and folks who work, the support staff. And I think that having it be up at the top is really important, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Other reflections on guiding principles? Reflections on guiding principles? Hearing none. Any reflections on the goals as amended? Board has worked on goals pre-pandemic and now in the midst of the pandemic. The guiding principles, that was your first pass publicly at those guiding principles. You have been working on goals over a period of months. Your reflections on the goals as amended? Any reflections? Is that a comment, Ms. Fecto, or is that...
Yeah. Well, I think this might be where the points that Pam was making about eliminating or reducing the achievement gaps might be considered. So to make it a clear goal, but that's, and I would support that.
Okay. And, okay, fair enough. Let us reflect upon that as an independent goal, if that is the wish of the board. Dr. Pritchett and then Dr. Pugh again.
Thank you. The expand secondary learning opportunities for all students, and I'm sure this is inferred, but I guess I wanted to say it. I know we've listed CTE, AP, early college, but obviously, districts, high schools would be encouraged to be looking at other learning opportunities for secondary students that may not be on that list. For the life of me, I can't come up with a good example right now, but I don't want individuals to feel as though they are, you know, and I realize you're using those for the metrics, but that they're tied to just that list. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Right. So we have five that we offer: CTE, early-middle college, dual enrollment, APIB. And they certainly do not, as you point out, cover the waterfront. One of the things that we did want to do, however, is offer a range of secondary school programs for which we have data, number one, that serve a wide range of children, number two, that we're able to disaggregate in various ways, number three, so we can begin to track the experiences that are available to young people. I'm reminded that when Michigan Merit Curriculum was passed into law effective 2006, effective with the first graduating class, effective class of 2011, that a number of people felt, and perhaps rightly so, that MMC crowded out CTE offerings. There have been amendments to Michigan Merit Curriculum. I don't think that's any longer a legitimate phenomenon. As the board may recall from a presentation a number of months ago, we're up 6% in four years in our CTE participation. We're up 75% in the last four years in CTE completers. 75% over the last four years in CTE completers, going from 27,000 children to 47,000 children. That's something that we ought to be tracking, that we ought to be tracking publicly, that people ought to be aware of. And that those districts that are expanding those programs to serve our young people, they ought to be able to hold up those expansions, those contributions, share them with others that have a similar interest, but not necessarily an understanding of how to make that happen. A lot of small rural schools, very supportive of and proud of their CTE offerings. So we didn't mean this to be the waterfront. We did mean it to be a representative sample of the sorts of secondary school programs that we could and legitimately ought to track. Dr. Pugh and then Ms. Fecto.
And for the most part, I think Board Member Fecto got to what I was saying, is if we could consider the achievement gap for African-Americans, Blacks, right here, revisiting the goal that we never attained but fell off of the department's goals. If we could review that and see how that fits here. Again, I think it fits into the conversation that we previously had. And again, I think that if we look at it from a numbers standpoint, if you pull out those who seem to be fearing the worst, look at it from the fact that if we hone in... the worst, look at it from the fact that if we hone in on that population, we can say it from that aspect. Of course, I say it because, you know, some of the foundations that our education system was built upon, that we need to aggressively demolish those. The other thing that I will just say is pretty much repetitive to my previous comment, which was, you know, just making sure, I don't want to throw anything out here because I haven't given it a lot of thought, but just making sure that we come up with some goals that are really showing that what we said, we really believe what we said, and that we're putting some goals that are smart, that are specific, measurable, achievable, but also relate to the times that we're in, where we're not just moving in these directions, but we're looking to see how we can come up with some innovative and radical ways of addressing the ills, the racism, the inequitable conditions that exist in our education system.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Pugh. Ms. Fecto?
Yeah, following up on Judy's point, can you hear me? Okay, yeah. When we talk about secondary, I was wondering, or if we could include looking at like the transition services or vocational programming for students with disabilities. I know that Michigan Rehabilitative Services has something out in, I believe, Plainwell, way, way, way on the west side of the state. I don't know of anything like that anywhere else in the state where they have programming to help get job opportunities for people who might have an array of disabilities. It would be great to have more opportunities for those children who are sometimes locked out of the CTE programs because they don't look like they would be able to complete them. And so I would like to, when we talk about expanding secondary learning opportunities, to include those types of, that type of programming as well.
So transition services programming, and you'd like us to look at the Plainwell model?
Right. And I don't know if it's called vocational services or whatever, but working with Michigan Rehabilitative Services more closely to have more opportunities statewide for, you know, to get young people into jobs. We all know the unemployment rate of people with disabilities is pretty sky-high, and it would be great if that could be, if they could be included in those opportunities.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Albridge?
So it sounds like we're kind of jumping a little bit ahead into the metrics, but along the same lines of what Michelle's talking about, I think having that included in the graduation rate metrics as well provides much more context to the graduation rates. My fear is when we, a lot of times when we talk about graduation rates, the assumption is that if you haven't graduated in four, or five, or six years, that means you dropped out, and the reality is, that's not the case for many of these students.
Right. And so our expectation would be to disaggregate for all of these metrics so that we could see how we're doing with specific groups of children, so that we're not able to hide behind aggregate metrics or metrics of central tendency. But I think to Ms. Fecto's point, there could be some value to tracking transition services metrics as well, both within secondary schools and President Albridge, to your point, within graduation rates as well. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah, I know that there was discussion about including the achievement gap and reducing that, and that sounds good. It's just sometimes that can lead to high-stakes testing, especially, and the elimination of things that are not considered in that gap. So if it's just, if we're only talking about ELA and math, then, you know, in order to close that gap, we get rid of liberal arts and focus just on those two subjects, that, you know, want to make sure that doesn't happen. Another way to close the achievement gap is to bring down those that are at the top, and so I hope that that's not something that would result in it as well. So those are, and again, yeah, it can often lead to high-stakes testing where these are the only, you know, these are the big things, and then everything else kind of falls by the wayside, so I want to make sure that doesn't happen.
I think it's, you know, I think it's a, it's a valid point or set of points. Ms. Fecto, your thoughts?
Oh, I was just going to say, I think that's a good point. We have to look at other metrics besides just high stakes, test scores in terms of closing the gap. I think it's a kind of a double-edged sword when you use those as metrics, so I think we should explore other metrics besides just high-stakes testing.
Okay. Dr. Pritchett and Dr. Albridge?
I'll make this short. I would ditto what Tom has said because that is a, sometimes a trap that you fall into, and we need to make sure, the last thing we need to do is add more high-stakes testing to the system.
Thank you. Dr. Albridge and Dr. Pugh?
I'll just say, I concur with that absolutely.
Okay, and Dr. Pugh?
I concur as well.
Okay, all right. There were several amens to that. Anything more on goals before we get an amen for lunch?
Oh, could I, I'm going to be leaving. I wanted to make one comment before I left.
Yes.
It was on what you're, when you first talked about the advisory committees early on, when you opened up, I know that you have for rural, urban, suburban task force. I was going to suggest that maybe SEAC could make some recommendations with regard to inform all of these groups around special education and the special concerns of children who may have, you know, underlying health conditions, those types of issues, which I know there are some, I'm getting all these emails saying, just open up the schools and nobody wear masks, and, you know, and as a parent of someone who has kids with a number of health issues, it scares the bejeebers out of me to, I think there's a disregard for other children who are the adults, and older adults who might be in the school, who would be at high risk. So I would, I just wanted to, since we have SEAC, they meet anyway, to ask SEAC to inform the groups around that you have put together to also give specific recommendations when it comes to children, especially ed children.
Very good. It's a good suggestion. We appreciate that, and we wish you, we wish you good luck this afternoon.
Thank you.
You bet. Board members, last call for discussion at this moment on proposed goals. If we don't have any more comments on proposed goals, we'll break for lunch, we'll return to public comment, and then we'll move back into a conversation on metrics for the Strategic Education Plan. So as the expression goes, last call for comments on goals. Last call. Once, twice, thrice. Have a good lunch. It is 12:10. We will return at 1 o'clock promptly for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you.